All right. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to recognize the passing of a long-term new report resident and a distinguished citizen, Gertrude Jones, who was the mother of Councilor Thomas Jones and husband to a past city marshal. You'll never find an individual, I served on years, for years, for the Florida, the Moxie State Park, and you'd never find an individual more passionate and more outspoken about resource conservation and the availability of public property than he enjoys out there. So I hope to keep the Jones family in your thoughts tonight.
What is this?
Are you guys going home?
Oh, this is going to the city. Thank you. At the pledge of allegiance.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Left the floor for the call of the rules.
Counselor Hissah.
Here.
Counselor Kinsey.
Here.
Counselor Tontah.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Agarwal.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Hartnett.
Present.
Counselor, oh, I'm sorry, Connaught.
Present.
Counsel President O'Brien is absent.
I think we know by now.
I know.
Are there any late follow-ups?
There are two late follow-ups. The councils will see on their desk the mayor's update, and they'll see an update to water and sewer on the snow budget deficit, the disc implications number four or five.
And what's a little council?
Motion away from rules and accept the late follow-ups.
Second.
Does anyone need the second? Any discussion? That was a favor.
I have to oppose.
So we'll start the meeting with those in just a moment. Mayor Halliday.
Good evening, councilors. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present my update. And the piece of information that I would love to share with you is that after a rule of three and a half weeks, very, very difficult process on Plum Island for not only the residents, but for our staff and the sixteen-hour horrible conditions they worked in, that they, under the leadership of Jamie Tooklow, which I think deserves some praise. Because honestly, I am not sure without his knowledge and expertise of the air vac system and his diligence since he joined our team in '09 after the system wasn't installed, that he took it really too hard in terms of learning as much about the system and troubleshooting it as he can. And I think we owe him debt for the work that he has done getting the system back online. Because I think one of the hardest things to get through to the residents and the public was that you just don't bring a hundred people from the Army Corps of Engineers out onto the island and just fix the thing. It's a closed-loop vacuum system that is highly technical and very difficult to maintain in these weathers. And so it had to be a very slow, tedious, difficult process, one by one, hub by hub, to get them back online. And then you still had freezes, which is, they report to a freeze, is that when you're losing vacuum pressure. So we'd be going strong, you'd have vacuum up to twenty, twenty-two, and all of a sudden there'd be a pop at sunset, and we'd start to lose pressure. So I am pleased that the system is back up and running, and actually not a single hiccup last night. But we're also not in the woods because ice is surrounding the top of these manholes. They can fall into these pits around the edges. They can affect the controllers. So Jamie has a controller here. But I wanted just to pass around to really what we were dealing with here. This is what the pits look like once they were uncovered. And you can really get a chance to see, you know, how the equipment inside these hubs, these valve hubs, were frozen solid. So they had to go in with pickaxes and hot water and sledgehammers and just about anything they could to, you know, unfreeze these things. And of course, during that process, you break the controllers. If you want to hold that up, I'm with Jamie for people to see. Here's another example of what the pits look like. These are the valves and just the tubes that they had to replace throughout the process. So I think those are pretty good examples of what we were dealing with. And there are six hundred and thirty-seven of these across the island. So not every single one of them was frozen, but they certainly had to check every single one of those. And one of these hubs attaches to every three homes, and that's where we have been, where they say so much about the sewer bits. We were white and we're very intanky to snow, which often needs to be uncovered. The residents were wonderful in terms of working with us, trying to uncover their candy canes. And I think as we were able to message what was happening out there, we were able to explain better. We had neighborhood captains, thank you, Molly and Merle set that up. Allison Hartnett, I mean, talk about counselor of the month, just in terms of her response to every single constituent working with us, you know, every single need that we had, whether it's cleanup. We had probably at the height, one hundred and seventy hotel rooms that we had between Hampton and Pedro and Amesbury, where people were residing. And this was difficult, that they were concerned about their homes. They were doing laundry, which is expensive, and grateful to the Institute for Saving, the New Prairie Port Bank, the Chamber, as well as Capado Ambulance, who gave us money to buy gift cards that help the residents. But we still have about twelve families that have, in fact, who have, one of the families who's behind me, who will be speaking to you during public comment tonight, who has a service line freeze. We also have a water main that wasn't, of course, installed enough in the ground that is frozen out there, too. So these are not things that our department staff fixed. We have a plumber that we hired, who's working every night and on weekends on Walsh, who's going in to help the residents. We don't have the equipment, although we're not licensed plumbers. We work on the outside of the home, and plumbers work on the inside. So that's what has to happen in terms of finding pipes, water pipes. We will then send in Service Master, who we've been working with, Maya, our insurance company, to go in and clean up homes. We are just in the process of collecting all of the bills regarding this whole incident. We know at this point with just overtime and materials and some of the cost for the two staff, we have one, we have three staff around the ground from air vac, we're close to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And we still have many more bills coming in that doesn't even cover the hotel and other costs at this point. So we have a lot of work to figure out the system going forward and how we can fix it or not. We have talked to DEP. Jamie's been on regular contact with them, and they want options, what we believe is in the best interest of Plum Island to fix this system. Also have been almost in daily contact with Lieutenant Governor Karen Pleo, who has offered to hold an executive level meeting with all the state parties, with our legislators, to sort of talk about next steps. Our legal team called today, saw the article in the Globe, felt that that was just the right amount of information and pressure, because we do need to get back at the table with CDA Smith and figure out how we can move this settlement or go to litigation process forward. So don't know if you have other questions about Plum Island, or if Jamie's here, if you have technical questions, too, that you would love to ask.
I'm just wondering about the hotels. So you say at the peak, one hundred and seventy rooms? Is that right? I mean, ballpark, you're going to come back. I mean, what are we looking at for cost?
About seventy, I think.
About seventy.
About seventy thousand. Maya, our insurance carrier, Department of Casualty Insurance, will only cover hotel for residents who actually had damage where there was actual backup.
Okay.
I have tried to argue that one, because people on the island did the right thing and didn't use their water and sewer. They were still living in zero-degree weather with no water and no bathroom. How could they stay there? Especially since this wasn't going to be a seventy-two-hour fix. So we pushed back on that, but we're not getting very far. So we had no choice. We absolutely had to do the right thing and put residents up in hotels. And then the reason people were further out is because the Fairfield Inn in, the Fairfield Inn in Amesbury didn't take pets, and a lot of the residents didn't want to leave their animals, so not letting them either, it was very cold.
And Mayor, that dollar for the review doesn't include the six hundred and fifty-six-thousand-dollar deficit in snow and ice?
That's a totally separate budget that we'll talk about in a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been a difficult, we're going to say it's in great financial shape, but we hope to recoup, obviously, some of these costs on Plum Island. But the other thing that I know that there's been talk about having a follow-up meeting, absolutely, absolutely. We need to sit down with the residents in a few weeks, once we've gathered all this extra documentation, that guy that put it all, invite all the residents to come back to the meeting. We need to debrief. You know, what happened with the system? Where are we going? What have we decided makes sense for fixes? What's happening with the legal piece? And let's talk about what we could have done better in terms of communication messaging or anything else that the residents felt we could have done a better job on. But I think overall, it, you know, was a really tough three and a half weeks, but you know, the fact is, there were no serious injuries. Nobody died, thank God. And we all survived a few more battle scars, but you know, I think, I'm really, really proud of the team we had out there, and we just would not quit until they got this system up. So anyway, I'd like to let Jamie go home and get some sleep. He's well-deserved, and I think there's no questions for him.
Mayor, I might ask him to stay because during public comment, there are people from the island who I doubt are comments, or perhaps have technical questions. Would that prefer him to stay?
You're right, thank you. As we move on to just our snow and ice budget, you can see where we are at six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar deficit for snow and ice in terms of removal. That's basically what it is. You know, we had ten feet of snow. I don't know, just, I don't know how we would have been able to survive this last seven storms if it wasn't for the help we received from the governor and with the staff from Penn, New York, Maryland, they're heading to the, I don't know what we would have done to try to survive all of this. It was a very, very difficult, as I said last month, but I'm very grateful for the support that we received from residents and working with each other, shuttling out neighbors, candy canes, hydrants. Most, I would say, had patience. You know, some didn't, but that's what's going to happen when you have snow events. But I think for the most part, I would like to eliminate snow and sewer from our vocabulary for a while. So we will march forward, and we've cut back, obviously, on any evening operations. Hopefully, we will not be doing any sanding or salting for the rest of the season. Let's begin, hope and pray we're done at this juncture. March can be a funny month, so can April. But again, lots of praise to, as you know, my state of the city, to Tony Finari and his staff, who did, I think, an amazing job, also worked day in and day out, many, many consecutive days without sleep, keeping our city open and safe. And I'm so grateful for the team that we have in the city. Counselor?
If I may ask, just, you know, looking at these numbers, forty-nine thousand dollars in parts and maintenance? Just curious.
We're surprised he was of a trust, he was, you know, something happens to him.
That's through all the equipment in the course of the year.
Oh, that's the course of the year? That wasn't the since, thank you, I missed that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the snow and ice budget? So just a couple other quick updates. The Lieutenant Governor is coming to Newburyport at eleven o'clock on March seventeenth, and we would like to invite all of you to be here for her event. We'll be obviously talking about high priority projects for the city, garage, bulkhead, apartment master facility, et cetera. And just, she hasn't been to Newburyport in her role as Lieutenant Governor. She certainly knows a lot about Newburyport at this juncture, but looking forward to hosting her for a visit, and then she would like to set a big press conference after, at the end of her visit. So please mark your calendars, and I would love to have you join us. What else? Our hazardous mitigation plan, which we renew every five years, is at DEP, and would like to be a credit to John Eric White and Department heads who work with him on our updated mitigation plan. You can find it at the link I included in your update. We have to finalize this very quickly, so I would recommend, if you want to take a look at this and give feedback, to do it fairly quickly. Pleased with Senator Ives, who was able to organize last Monday a visit from our new Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Secretary Matthew Eaton, who came out to the landfill to tour the site, not much you can see, but our ground is white, but were able to just give him sort of a general lay of the land, if you will, and where our areas of concern continue. We then went on to the middle school for a short conference. Counselor Junta was there, as well as our representative Calforce, as we had, and, Ron, Ron, thank goodness you have that, Ron. Ron was there also, so it was very helpful to present from a neighborhood perspective of what they've been dealing with, with the landfill over all this time. And again, our, one of our biggest concerns is, it appears that the ventures will be doing the court-ordered closure pieces to get to closure, but then what happens down the road when the fan is depleted? So that's, you know, one of our biggest concerns, where we are with that right now. As you know, we started our budget, I sent you the governor's budget numbers for local aid in Chapter Seventy, and the spreadsheet from Newburyport, what we anticipate, because we still have a few gaps in terms of, you know, the cherry sheet of what we can fill in there, but I have things that we're seeing slight increases in both local aid and Chapter Seventy, given what's going on with this revenue and deficit in the state, and even though it is this fiscal year, I'm pleased to see that those numbers have increased. And would encourage you, as you run into your legislators, to please continue to encourage them that we are still not at the '07 levels in terms of local aid, and we really need them to keep pushing and pushing till we get back up. I think we're fortunate to have a team in the governor's office who does really understand the role municipalities play across the state. And I think I had told you that I have been invited to sit on the governor's Capitol of Congress group, and that's meeting next week, keep you informed of what we're discussing, and also look for your feedback on other items that we're working on. I think the 40R hearing last week went very well, little smaller turnout than I had anticipated. We had representative from state housing and community development, several councils were there, including the board counselor, Bob Cronin. I think the residents who are direct of butters to Route One or across Route One asked really very good questions about going forward and impacts and timelines, and we have work to do, certainly, but overall, I thought it was a very productive and positive meeting. So I thank all of you for your work with residents and what's happened there. The Brown School, we're still, Biden, we're behind schedule, which is probably known because we've been focusing all of our energies on snow and sewer. But there was a core group of the ad hoc group, who didn't go to look at the artist studios, excuse me, in Amesbury, and we're going to order the feedback on that today with my planning update. But we certainly are waiting to hear from the educational group under the leadership of Bruce Minnan, to see what their findings regarding the building, and have been talking to individual developers about where we are with that. But that's, I think, the highlights of the last couple weeks of what we've been working on. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Yes?
Well, I have a question, just to save time on the appointments, right, in the consent agenda?
Yes.
How many slots are coming open on the zoning board appeals? I just, I just lost, you know, I was trying to, who's up, who's not up?
Well, we thought I was going to have two.
Yeah.
But I had a really positive meeting with Richard Boulay on Friday, and asked him if he would stay. He wanted to step down on the planning board.
Oh, okay.
And we had seven delegates, really solid planning board candidates. So one of the people I convinced to go to the ZBA now is going to be back in the mix for the planning board. So it was really nice to see such talent step forward for the appointments this time.
Okay, so after these two, it's going to stabilize? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Just a quick question. In regards to the 40R, when would we know about the 40S money?
That depends on population who rents in the building, because you can't apply unless it's going to impact schools.
Okay.
So it will really depend on the population in terms of rentals.
Do we have any way to gear it, looking at other communities or customers?
I'm not sure. You know, we heard from, you know, one courtyard that they anticipated more families than there were. So it's hard to know who is going to look at one boss's dwelling and say, hello, there are a lot of people like to bed in apartments, office, you know, bedroom, so it's not necessarily that they're bringing their children in.
Okay.
But I know right now we're in high capacity for the schools, and even though we have room at the breast and we don't in the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighteenth through the high school, we did not accept any school choice students this year. So we just, but we, according to the work we put forward for our statement of interest to begin the school process, our census in the schools should be starting to go down in the eighteen.
Okay.
But, you know, again, it continues to be holding true in terms of what they predicted right now. So, you know, I think you built a new school, but it's a problem.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask the clerk to get the clipboard and see who's going to speak during our public comment. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Smart.
Smart.
My name is Joe Smart. My wife, Linda, and I live on sixteen Reservation Terrace on Plum Island. I do have a few questions regarding going forward with the situation that's happened out there. But I do want to preface any questions with a statement saying that the city has been tremendous, I feel the city's been tremendous with their response on this. The mayor, Lisa, who works with the Water and Sewer Department, I guess, I'm not sure which, but she's been absolutely credible under extreme duress by some of the angry residents out there on Peter Hall. She spent the whole week out there. I understand this is a very unusual occurrence, and it's obviously maybe not completely forewarned, but from what I understand, there were some comments originally with the, when the sewer system was going in, that this could possibly be a problem. We don't, I don't want to get into that. My questions are, what is going to happen as far as costs and cost-bearing in the future? My wife and I are still in the hotel. I mean, I'm one of the people whose lines froze. So even though the system is fixed supposedly, our line froze because we chose not to use the water and go to the hotel, and the water was in the line, so the water froze. What's going to happen when people come back from, the summer people, and see they had a backup in their house two months from now? And it's going to be mold and this and that? I don't think this problem is over, is what I'm getting at. It's probably not even nearly over. Who's going to bear those costs? I mean, the city, state emergency funds, or lawsuits, air vac, installers, residents? We happened to be in the hotel, and the air vac representative is, or one of the guys from air vac is staying at the hotel, and he was telling us every morning at breakfast that he's going to have a pretty thick report as far as where to go, you know, from this, what procedures or what suggestions would be made to improve the system.
Let me see if I can answer those, or get some answers to you. First, I want to say, and I'm sure that I speak for all the councilors, that we really do sympathize with your situation. You're not alone, obviously. It's been horrendous, and some of us, digging our candy canes last weekend, we can before last, you know, saw the kind of situation that you're dealing with, that Councilor Hartnett has been dealing with continuously. And I think that probably the short and direct answer, and I'm not going to try to mislead you, is that we don't yet know, number one, and won't know until we get past the crisis situation. We're close to doing that, but I'm going to deflect this question to the mayor and her staff to see if you can put a sharper point on that.
You have to share the mic. He does. It's okay, it's okay. In terms of, you know, we have a legal team, Ruben and Redmond, who have come out to meet with the residents a couple times as we were working on, we figured we'd start with the water first, but we're going to need to know that it would take eighteen months of fighting over a protocol, and ended up with only six hydrants done. We have metals that are in labs right now that they took out of that system. We should have those results hopefully in a month, so that will give us a little more information. Legal team has been checking in regularly with us since this all happened, and they just said, as soon as you get your head above water and you're ready to start again, we'll set up a meeting. So we'll be meeting with them within the next two to three weeks to figure out next steps. I've already been in direct contact with Attorney General, and a sentence told her that I will not sit around the table with thirteen attorneys and argue over protocol for eighteen months and have nothing to show for it. We're done, especially given the crisis that all of you have had to live through over this winter. We are done. There are, there is information out there that, even they said on paper, we read the Globe article today, that it's a maintenance, not a maintenance issue. The system has been timed, air vac comes out twice a year, once a year. They're in direct consultation with Jamie and his group in terms of whatever needs to happen out there. It essentially comes down to, it was installed wrong, because these, I mean, you don't put a system in the ground that's eight, nine years old, and it freezes up in the winter. I mean, it's, this is New England. It makes no sense. So, you know, and to have this level, not one can, it's, you know, entire northern Boulevard, and all of the homes off of it. So we have work to do, and we will figure out what makes sense, you know, how do we heat these cans? What group would put them in November? If we can't move them, and we can't change them, and we can't change out the system, which we don't know that yet, then how do we heat these cans so that this doesn't happen next year? So we've got a lot of things we need to do as we turn the corner and we get through this, but hopefully we'll have your service available back shortly. There's a second question. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, there is a line there, and I think that's part of his problem. Can the city help him with that? Because I know that the city is responsible for the lines, it, to a certain plumber that is employed with homeowners.
From the lines, we don't have a.
You called, you called Walsh.
Yeah, yeah. I understand the situation where we theoretically, the homeowners own the line or are responsible for the line from the street catch basin, whatever you call that, to our house. So that's, it's frozen, so we're responsible for that. We called the plumber that the city-
Is paying for, because we know we asked you not to use water, which caused the problem.
Yeah, Walsh, he must be overwhelmed because he doesn't, he's not answering his phone anymore. So we called the section choice, which they gave us, Southern, Southern. He responded, he didn't get there yet, he's gonna come tomorrow. I mean, just to give you an idea, I mean, without going over on any- Buster from Southern, that's happened to be my plumber. I would've called him right away, but, you know, of course, it's the city thing, so. But anyway, he spent all day today on one house with Wilkinson, Backhoe. They had to rip out the whole line to repair it. The city's gonna pay for that? That's gonna be a three or four thousand, maybe five thousand dollar bill just for that house to unfreeze the water. My wife's freaking out, it's gonna happen tomorrow.
It's warm.
It's warm. I don't know how to deal with it. This is gonna be future stuff. But I did wanna ask, and I would request, that at some point in time, when discussions are made as far as what is going to be happening forward, that you would accept a liaison from Plum Island, that the residents of Plum Island could, I don't know about a leg, but, you know, put forward.
But we're gonna do the meeting, but, but we're gonna do the meeting out there, at Peter Hall. Just like we have all the other meetings.
Okay.
In city council, we're having joy. This involves, this involves you and Plum Island.
I do wanna say, most phone calls at night are great.
Thank you, Peter. He was, he was the one responsible for the communications.
Peter, I mean, my wife sits there, went to make a phone call and I, you know.
Great, great to know that you're, that you're top of that.
Joan, may I cut to the chase a little bit here? You have a representative on the city council who actually lives on the island and, you know, if you're talking about a liaison, I know that she would probably be the first person to call and she's been available to people, but I think one thing, I'm speaking a bit out of turn now, having said this to the mayor previously, but save your receipts. You don't know what might be reimbursable under which scenario after we're past, you know, this crisis. Try and figure out what our next steps are.
I mean, my own personal thing is we had, we had to pay for a hotel, you know, out of our own pocket one night before we were allowed to, you know, get something. You know, that type of stuff. All right, thank you, that's enough. I think that's spoken enough.
Thank you for your patience. Next up, David Farmer.
First, my thanks to the mayor and Tony and the people who work so hard out there. First, I'd like to say, this whole Plum Island project was a political process. It was not an engineering project. I'm sorry, I'm an engineer, a civil engineer by background. It was political and money. Everyone here should know that and it still is. You've known about this project for five years, that the pits were freezing up. What's been done in five years? Nothing, not a single thing, except the guys are out there working all the time. I feel sorry for them for working in the winter. The first thing that happened on this project to begin was, was take the rights of Plum Island to vote on this away. It was done. We had a water district out there that gave us the right to vote on this. The mayor and the chairman of the city council went to the legislature the night before the legislature end and took our right to vote away. That was political, they didn't wanna hear anything about Plum Island. They just wanted to do it their way. And if you don't know it by now, they took the highest bidder that city councils and other people voted on to do the study on the job and then cut it way down and we're ten months late doing the study. You should know some history or you'll repeat it, just like the landfill, just like Newbury's landfill, just like Plum Island. This is a great city when the citizens can participate. When you cut their rights to vote away, you take that away. You're doing it again and you know why? Because you don't wanna understand the problem. I too am interested in knowing what's gonna happen from now. I don't believe air vac wants any part of this because they know it was not put in the way they said it should be put in. We told you that, nobody wanted to listen. The ex-CDM person who was in charge of the project said it was okay to do it that way. He didn't care, he's gone. You paid fifty thousand dollars to get rid of him. No, you weren't here at the time, not all of you. But you should know the history of the project. I went to most of the meetings that were associated with this project. There were dozens of, I couldn't go to because they were done in secret. It's called executive session. You should get those methods, I don't believe you'll find them. I don't believe you'll find anything in there. I was excluded from meeting after meeting after meeting or was kicked out of them because they're going to do executive session. That's political, that's corrupt. Yes, the city is responsible for the whole mess, nobody's not, believe me, just the city. What did you get out of it? A Newport sewer plant that still stinks that doesn't meet the Clean Water Act. You don't wanna hear about that. Yes, that's the state's fault, but you'll have to pay for it when somebody tells you to upgrade it. You don't wanna hear about that. There's other things that are more important. What's more important than health? Sewage, clean water, without Chinese poisoning in it. I'm sorry, you don't wanna hear about it. You tell me what's more important than our right to vote and our health and what goes in our water? We never had sewer on Plum Island before. We didn't have it flowing in our houses, we didn't have it running down the streets. Why? Not because you can't do good job, because it's political and you don't want the people involved. Do you want them involved in the landfill? No. Do you want them involved in any of this stuff? No, you don't wanna hear what the people have to say. I can guarantee you, the people on Plum Island have more wisdom than sits right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Bordeaux, from three seventy-six High Street, please. Tough act to follow.
Good evening, I'm Renee Bordeaux and I'm here tonight because I've submitted my resume to serve on the zoning board of appeals. My credentials are within your packets, but I just wanted to give a brief sort of summary of my credentials for you and I'll just keep it brief. I've been a resident in New York Court and homeowner for the past three years. My educational background is I have a master's in civil and environmental engineering from the University of New Hampshire and my specialty is water resources. I don't do sewer work.
Thank God.
You gotta vote though.
As far as my new professionally, for the past decade, I've worked as an environmental consultant, again specializing sort of water resources, surface water work, storm water work for both private sector and public sector clients. And I've assisted these clients with various projects, including land based, land use, planning, design, and implementation. I think that my credentials are pretty unique and I think they would serve the ZBA well and I look forward to the opportunity to serve the city and its residents.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your voluntary service. Karen, I believe it's Marshall.
It's Elijah, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm here for the Plum Island Water and Sewer. I'm at a different aspect, unlike these people. I was actually whizzed out of the hotel on Friday into a house that had not even been cleaned up. And I'm trying to prevent this from happening to another family. We still have waste in our house and I've not been put back in a hotel and I'm hoping that this isn't gonna happen again. If it isn't, you know, we've got people coming in, I've called everybody in the world. We're trying to get it fixed, but it's been a disaster. And this is the second time it's happened to our family. When it was only a year old and everybody said, this is a great system, it that high on my son's birthday, so I remember that. So I'm a little disappointed in how, I don't know if I'm the only family that it's happened to with three kids. I'm not sure. But, you know, being that I have lung disease and I have, and, you know, health risk, it's very disconcerning that they waited, they actually said to leave before a house was cleaned up. And I don't know what they can do in the future, but most towns, the health inspectors will not allow that. They, once you've got a family into a safe place in a good condition. And I actually paid for the hotel before they put us into another hotel because I was concerned.
Do you have sewage in your house right now?
Yes, I do.
You do?
Yes, I do, because it got backed up again because I was told by service master that they're gonna clean the traps and they're gonna, and they did some kind of vacuum thing, but they didn't do it. They'd never tried it out. In fact, I have been told they didn't actually even bleach because they don't believe in bleach. I do mold testing, I'd rather have everything killed. I'm sorry, but that's the way I like it done. But I do, yes, we do. And I was kicked out Friday morning, Friday morning. It just got back on, so, you know, service master couldn't even get in there. And I'm just telling you my concern that what happens next week when this happens again. Our house is worthless right now, I can't sell the house. So what do I tell my kids when we're not being treated as second-class citizens? I mean, what would you, I mean, is there anybody out of town that this would have happened?
It's a fair question, I'm gonna throw your question to councillor Harquist.
Hello?
Back into a hotel.
I was just gonna say, we'll take care of you, period.
I know, but it, I mean, it's, it's, it's been since, like, Sunday when I called the police department and they, and the water department said, good luck. The, actually the plumber, they gave my husband a date of Friday. He just went down there and started cleaning the traps because, you know, he can't wait.
No, you need to go back to a hotel with your children because you can't-
Well, at this point, we're cleaning it up. I've got the insurance, but-
No, service master will be in there tomorrow, I'll have staff-
Oh, they will be in there, because the insurance company is calling right now. I talked to him.
But again, again, there were so many families to deal with and I'm not, I don't know how you felt through the cracks, but you-
We would have not sent you back to your home. I told the people on Thursday-
Who, what people?
I told Lisa and everybody else and everybody that I talked to at the mayor's office that there's, we don't even know if it's been cleaned yet because at that point, I hadn't gotten a notice until you sent that mayor's thing at five thirty saying, okay, it's all set. And they said, you have to go with whatever the hotel says. If they say, go out, you go out.
Your children?
Yes.
If I can get your mask, is there a one tonight?
Would not one tonight, I'm gonna drag them, they're asleep.
I'm sassy, I'm sassy.
I have, you know, I have a little one, he's not, I'm not dragging him anywhere more places. But I don't, what I'm trying to do is prevent this from happening again. Because obviously, this is, I mean, if-
We have not moved anybody back into their homes unless they're ready to return to their homes. As you can see, they have a sewer right freezes and they're still in a hotel. I don't know if that's a story.
First thing, tomorrow morning?
I, I told, you know, if everybody knows the street, you tell the street number, you tell them at the end of the day, the street number. That street number is, the mayor's office called and said, it's okay, so then we go back. But there's-
But you have a unique situation because your service line is frozen and they have a-
No, actually, the frozen part is not a problem and it's not, we checked it out. The frozen, and that might be, I don't know if that's something the engineers can figure out, but it actually works. We, we, we figured this out, it's just all those traps. If you don't get that stuff out of the traps, it doesn't, it does work. We, I mean, we tested, the vents work.
Karen, may I suggest something?
The one vent that is frozen.
And, and-
So we're gonna have service-
And it sounds like a horrific situation. My suggestion is, you've got the mayor, you've got the DPS director, you've got the mayor's assistant, and you've got our city engineer right here. Sit down. Okay. My suggestion is you sit down right now with them and see if you can get some immediate-
Well, actually, I've already done a warning, I called the insurance company and said, and he, they actually are getting someone now that I talked, you know, I told them that I didn't have a hotel to go to.
But part of my, part of my response to that is this as well. As I said to the previous gentleman, save your receipts.
I'll save everything, but I just want us to somehow get this into a process because all those people on that list, if you call on Thursday and you say, these are the streets, the hotel got all those streets and was told by the mayor's office that these are the streets, they can now have to go home.
And in general, that was true, except your situation was unique on your street and I did not know that, nor did Lisa, Tony, Peter. No, we didn't have that, we would've extended your stay. We've done that, and we see all your neighbors, we've done, and where other people on the island, we've extended their stay. I don't know, we, they, they'll have the cracks.
No, no, no one's checking to see who has backups.
Well, we expect people to call us, we can't call twelve hundred residents.
No, but I mean, it was on the list. I had a list of, I'm on a backup on the sewer list, on the police department.
But once the street was ready and operable, we, that's when people were ready to go back into their homes. So unfortunately, you had a unique situation in your home and you didn't get service master in there to clean up. You still had a frozen line and your system wasn't working and you were told to get out of the hotel. I don't know how that, how we never got the information.
But what they should do is check the houses before, I mean, if I tell, when I-
You can't, you can't, you can't check the houses, you can't come in there and-
No, but when I tell people at the mayor's, I told the mayor's office, I told the mayor's office a wide time.
I never got that message.
Well, I was, you know, like I said, I, you know, in, you know, today when I saw-
We'll, we'll start tomorrow fresh and we will-
But I'm just saying that let's get this so that it is, I mean, you know-
You're the only person who's in this situation right now, that we have sent home.
Okay, I was told that there was more people, that, you know, that there was twelve people that were working on-
No, but those twelve people have service line freezes right now and some have absolutely chosen to stay and others are still in hotels as your friends and neighbors behind you.
So, Mayor, do-
So we will take care of this first thing in the morning.
But like, let's try and make sure this doesn't happen then, because, you know, I did call all the departments, I called Red Cross all the once.
Yeah.
Well, the main point of connection had been Lisa or Peter and then I'm not sure what happened.
I, I called Lisa on Thursday and they didn't, couldn't even tell me if it was gonna be, if my house is gonna be ready that day, you know, basically.
Well, in terms of the street, I think there was some discommunication in terms of what your question was, in terms of was the street gonna be open and running or was it specific to your home?
No, I mean, I did say I had a, I had a backup, I was gonna have time to clean it, so. No, that's fine, but I just don't want it to happen again, this is two times. You know, it's like, you know, you get one, you have one try, second try, that's not a mistake.
Thank you, Karen, I'm sorry that you've had to go through this. That ends our public comment period. I'm gonna ask the clerk to proceed to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for February twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. There are two transfers. First is, they're both from free cash. First is to the city clerk, elections and registration account, nine thousand five hundred, that's in for approval. Second is the transfer from free cash to high school renovations for thirty thousand. That's to refer to budget and finance. There are three communications. First is a letter for the Easter Hat Parade on April fifth, two thousand fifteen, on In Street, that's in for approval. The second is the taxi cab renewal for Seacoast Taxi, that's to refer to license and permits. And the third is the Fourth Annual Pan Mast Challenge Grade Under Report Kids Ride, slated for June twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, that's to go to public safety. There are two appointments, first reading. First one is Renee Bordeaux, three seventy-six High Street, to the zoning board of appeals until March first, two thousand twenty. And the second is a reappointment for Jamie Pennington at sixteen Eagle Street, the same zoning board of appeals until January fifth, two thousand twenty. And that is the consent agenda as it consists this evening.
Okay, thank you. What is the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and it's been second, any discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda has been approved and now to the regular agenda.
Regular agenda is, jumps over appointments. And we'll go right to, I'm sorry, we'll go right to communication- And we'll go right to, I'm sorry, we'll go right to, uh, communication number five, which is, uh, on the counselor's desk. It's a memorandum, uh, to the mayor from Anthony J. Frenari, DPS director, uh, regarding the following. This year's FY two thousand fifteen snow and ice expense account, uh, were budgeted ninety each. It shows, uh, an estimated snow and ice expenditures as of March ninth, two thousand fifteen, as the mayor previously mentioned. We're in deficit for a total of six hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, and there's a breakdown on the second page.
I think we can dispense with the further reading. What's the will of the council on this item?
Move to receive and file.
Second. Motion to receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Next item.
Leads us to, um, orders. First order is tabled order with respect to, uh, Hanch's Way.
Motion to remove from the table?
Second.
The motion has been to remove this item from the table and second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Counselor Tantar.
No, sorry, I wasn't. Motion to, uh.
Put back on the table.
Put back on the table, yeah.
The motion is to place back, that item back on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to replace this item back on the table. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will just issue a, a, a brief comment on this item. It was the express wish of the council president, who is not here tonight, to have this item recommitted, so that he can act on it at the time when he's in the chair. He has a, a strong interest in this item, and would like to be here when it's acted upon. Any other comments? All those in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next order.
Order number two, uh, this is the resolution, would like me to read it, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, whereas, New Report Citizens are served every day by public servants in federal, state, county, and local government. These unsung heroes do the work that keep our government alive and working. Whereas public servants throughout the city include teachers, nurses, laborers, librarians, public safety officers, commuter technicians, healthcare professionals, clerks, and many others. These employees provide the services demanded by citizens with efficiency and integrity. Whereas without these public services, community continuity of government would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated the first week of May every year since nineteen eighty-five, in accordance with an annual designation by the president and Congress. Throughout the country, mayors, governors, communities, and public service organizations participate by issuing proclamations, hosting award ceremonies, and special tribute events, delivering messages about the value of public service, now therefore be it. Resolved, the New Report City Council proclaims May third through the ninth, two thousand fifteen, as Public Service Recognition Week. We encourage the people to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all level, federal, state, county, and city. Jointly submitted, councilors Hirsag and Junta.
What's the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been, uh, to approve this, and it's been second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Order number three, please.
Dated March third. City Council of Newburyport hereby accepts with gratitude gifts totaling six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for providing the support to residents on Plum Island impacted by the disruption to the city's sewer system in February of March two thousand fifteen. Contributor. Institution for Savings, three thousand five hundred. New Report Five-Cent Savings, two thousand five hundred. Great New Report Chamber of Commerce, two hundred dollars in gift cards. Cattaldo Atlantic Ambulance, same amount. And In Street Barber Shop, fifty dollars gift.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Harquist.
Thank you, counselor. Um, I'd like to personally thank these contributors. They stepped up when we asked for, um, some help, and with all this money, we were able to purchase gift cards, which has been, um, distributed to the displaced families. In addition to these, um, five businesses, I'd like to also take this opportunity to thank the schools, um, especially the PTO, and Beth Rossi, who is the principal of the Knox School, for her sense of urgency and for her compassion. They have pulled through, and they have been unbelievable. We have some great leaders, residents, and businesses in this town, and we, we really should be grateful. And, um, it's my pleasure to acknowledge them and to thank them.
Might add to that list the Salvation Army, because they've been helping.
There's numerous, but this was, I thanked them already.
Yeah.
This is their turn.
All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to ordinances.
It's the second reading ordinance.
There are four.
Second reading ordinance number one, on section thirteen-one-seventy-four, uh, which is parking limited for periods longer than four hours of six AM and seven PM during weekdays excluding holidays on the Westerly Side from the intersection of Route One and State Street, continuing in a northerly direction approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty feet. Submitted, counselor Agaman.
What's the will of the council?
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
Motion to approve ordinance number one, second reading, Counselor Hirsag. Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
And the motion has been passed, and becomes ordinance, will be sent to the mayor. Uh, ordinance number two.
Second reading again, uh, section thirteen-one-seventy-four, parking limited, State Street, delete from the table, um, same as read before. Would you like me to read the whole thing? Mr. President, I will.
I think we just can dispense with the reading, we've heard it in first reading. Uh, I'd entertain a motion from the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes. And enacted, we'll move that on to the mayor's office as well. Ordinance number three.
Ordinance number three is, uh, section thirteen-one-sixty-eight, parking restricted on certain streets. Murphy Avenue to be added, no parking on both sides, with the exception of the area running for a distance of one hundred feet. From Low Street, wherein there shall be no parking on both sides between the hours of seven AM and nine AM, and two PM and four PM, weekdays, excepting holidays. Submitted, Counselor Junta.
Motion to approve.
Second. The movement, uh, to pass, this has also been second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on a second reading.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes. And enacted, we'll move that on to the mayor's office as well. Ordinance number three.
Ordinance number three is, uh, section thirteen-one-sixty-eight, parking restricted on certain streets. Murphy Avenue to be added, no parking on both sides, with the exception of the area running for a distance of one hundred feet. From Low Street, wherein there shall be no parking on both sides between the hours of seven AM and nine AM, and two PM and four PM, weekdays, excepting holidays. Submitted, Counselor Junta.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and it's been second. Any discussion? Then we'll take a roll call on this matter.
Counselor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Counselor, Counselor Hirsag.
Mr. President, if I could just ask the sponsor to, uh, just for matters of the public record, if you could just summarize real briefly what the change is with this ordinance?
Happy to do so. Uh, two changes. First, uh, this is related to the ordinance number one tonight. Uh, we wanted to make sure that on Upper State Street, it was put in the residential parking program. Uh, there was an error made in the ordinance that I wrote in the fall, and it was misfiled under, uh, section thirteen dash one-seventy-four. The other change, uh, which has to do with the new subsections A four and, and J, are to create, uh, because of bona fide hardship for in-street residents, just in-street residents, where it is not feasible to give them, uh, residential parking rights on the commercial streets, a first-come, first-served opportunity to get up to four, and only four, residential parking passes for the Green Street lot. If there are more than four applications, the parking clerk must, uh, conduct a lottery.
Thank you. Any other questions? And then we'll take a roll call on this item.
Will you take a roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes. And now we'll move to committee items. Budget and finance.
Nothing, Mr. President.
General government.
Nothing.
License and permits.
Nothing tonight.
Neighborhood and city services, nothing tonight. Planning and development.
Nothing tonight.
Public utilities.
Um, yes. Um, just a, just a brief announcement, I stopped doing safety.
Excuse me, are you bringing anything out of committee first?
Pardon?
Are you bringing anything out of committee first?
No.
No, just a brief announcement, um, we do have one item in committee, and, um, which is a, um, referred last November, a, um, in a, uh, in order regarding, uh, second water meters. Um, this will be, uh, discussed, uh, at a, posted, uh, public utilities meeting on March, Monday, March thirtieth, at six-thirty PM in this room.
Rules committee? There's nothing in rules committee, so I guess we can't report anything out.
Public safety.
Did I skip over public safety? I apologize.
Did.
Public safety.
Thank you, uh, nothing coming out, uh, just a, a brief report. Um, last Thursday, I believe, uh, there was a meeting down at, um, Mass DOT District Four, which is down in Arlington, and that regards the, uh, the new CVS Tropic Star, um, development on the corner of Story Ave and Low Street. Uh, the, I attended that meeting as representative, uh, of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, and also, um, I was backstopping Counselor Junta, um, the ward counselor. Um, in this meeting, uh, we expressed, or I expressed, the concern of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, which is made up of city marshal, uh, fire chief, city engineer, DPS director, um, parking clerk, and chair of public safety. And, uh, the, the whole basis of, of the concern of, uh, Traffic Safety Advisory is the exiting of cars from the proposed development, being able to turn left across two and possibly three lanes of traffic. So this, uh, was voiced as a legitimate concern, I think it's echoed by the mayor's office as well, or I know it's echoed by the mayor's office as well, uh, that this is a safety concern for that area. So that was, uh, presented to, um, Mass DOT. It had been previously presented by, um, Director of Policy and Administration, Peter Lombardi. Um, it was also memorialized by the, uh, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. The other, um, issue we brought up was Russell Terrace, which is, as you know, a, the Oleo Woods Development, and quite possibly fifty-five or so homes that have single egress, and we were advocating for a, uh, traffic signal demand light there to be linked with, um, the appropriate lights on Story Ave. So this, these comments were given to Mass DOT, and it's their, um, decision to make, and we are awaiting their decision. So that's just an update.
Thank you, counselor. I believe, uh, unless I'm mistaken, the chair of planning and development also has an announcement about the continuation of the meeting that we concluded the other night.
Well, I wasn't going to, but, uh, I, uh, update on continuation of, uh, we have a meeting on, uh, March fourth. We're gonna continue the, um, smart growth portion of the hearing till, okay, maybe next.
May sixteenth.
And we are going to continue the, uh, rezoning of that area, of that so-called Back Bay neighborhood. I believe that's on March.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, well, I'm here to make sure you all know.
Thank you.
Just send me an email.
Rules committee has nothing good of the order.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Kinsey.
Uh, I wanted to just make sure all our, my fellow counselors and the public are aware of, of a meeting coming up, Community Forum, Newburyport says no to prejudice. It's coming up April seventh, at seven PM at the Knox Mall and Library. It's, this was prompted by a situation that hasn't really been aired out, and I think this is perhaps the opportunity to do such. Um, a situation in the schools where there's some anti-Semitic bullying, uh, that was going on. And so this is gonna be an opportunity for the community, and I strongly encourage my fellow counselors to attend. I spoke to it at the Deacon Coalition, uh, which is it, um, to, to come alongside our children and, and, uh, serve as examples and partake in this, um, community forum. And that's April seventh, again, thank you. What time? Seven PM, the Knox Mall Library.
Counselor Hirsag.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also regarding our children, um, I just wanted to alert the council, and really everyone listening, um, that this coming Friday night, upstairs in the auditorium, will be the Fifth Annual Poker Tournament to benefit the Newburyport Educational Foundation. Um, it's a big moneymaker for the NEF. Uh, I have been a participant for the past four years. I'll again be here this coming Friday night, helping to raise money for the kids, and, um, And anyone wanting to buy a ticket, if you will, you can go to newreportef.org.
There being no other items on the agenda, I'm gonna exercise the prerogative of the Chair and correct an oversight, I think, an honest oversight, because a couple of residents came here to speak on an item that was included in the consent agenda, and because it wasn't actually taken out of the consent agenda, they had no opportunity to speak. With that in mind, I'm going to ask two women who are here to talk about the Easter Hat Parade, April fifth, for just a moment. Would you care to approach the microphone and let the council know what you have in mind?
And you have to wear the hat.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. There we go.
There we go.
Please identify yourselves. The police will wanna know about this too.
Who actually lives in West Newbury.
And Sharon Courier, who lives here in Newbury Port. You should speak. It seems like I should speak.
Cause you live here.
Your hats speak for themselves.
That's because you don't wanna speak.
No, no, I'm happy to.
Well, I just wanna share with you that last year, there were five or six women in the community, one of whom had been to New York the year before for the New York Easter Parade. And the enthusiasm about that event still is carried on as many of you as a child growing up perhaps even wore Easter hats on Easter Sunday. But they're still doing it with great vigor in New York City. And so we thought, this would be a fun thing to do. I think the residents might enjoy it. And we have In Street as a parade area. So we did speak forward, and you all said, yes, we thought that would be a good thing. It started at noon time, and it ended about one-thirty. We were very, very surprised by the number of people that participated. There were five or six categories, and Pat, can you name some of the categories?
Name all of them. Most elegant bonnet, best kids' design, best Newbury Port-themed hat, most dapper, and funniest.
So it was very, very well received. And a number of people said, I hope you'll do this again this year. So we're here to state that we'd like to move forward with that, and we'd like some approval from you. I think there's one thing that kind of came up as maybe a little bit of concern.